Education to order. Teri, would you note that all members are present except Mrs. Burdeness, who should be on her way? Okay. Let's all stand for the flag salute, please. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, in the God of, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Eileen, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Tori, you have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes.
John?
Madam President, I see that still the motion that I've been requesting for several months, that is, to have a motion where we can discuss a town hall meeting, the subject of which would be potentially hiring of a school resource officer. I notice that that motion is still not making the agenda, so as I did last month, I'm going to continue to not vote in favor of approving the agenda.
All right. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion, Terri, three, one, and look at Chris's absence. All right. Let's go on to item five, which is the superintendent's reports and presentations.
Sure. First up, Ella Hous, our student representative, was not able to get off of work this evening, so she couldn't be here, but she knew there were some notes, and I will read her report to the board. Girls varsity basketball currently competing in tournaments, doing quite well. Girls water polo went into an overtime game last night. That's how they lost. Boys basketball practicing, preparing for a vigorous line of basketball games coming up next week. Finals are on the way next week, and both students and teachers are feeling the stress as the study load piles up and procrastination hits. Great news on the college front as we get closer to those dates when college acceptance letters and offers are coming into students. We are proud to announce two of our students, Malia Luce, accepted into the NYU Film School, which is really a dream opportunity for anybody interested in that field, one of the best programs in the country. And Olivia Cordopassi has been accepted to Columbia University. If you know her at all, she is really just a stellar young lady. So we're proud of both of them. More good news to come, but this is the first tipping of the hat to our students. ASB is also getting busy starting to plan activities for upcoming halftime and encourage more school spirit during basketball games. A big dance coming this winter as well, and then a girls soccer one last night. It does say yay here, so I'm going to read that as well. And personally from Ella, so sorry I couldn't make it since the board meeting dates changed. I wasn't able to get work off in time, but I do hope you all have a lovely holiday, and I can't wait to see you and update you all in the new year. Thank you.
That's my regards to you.
Certainly. I love the voice in there. Right, Mrs. Batat?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. The next one is a presentation. We actually have two presentations for you this evening from Mrs. Stephanie Gugonas, who is here this evening. Thanks so much for being here. I had asked her, actually it was going to be in January, to bring a presentation to the board about the update on our progress with our significant commitment to the development and implementation of MTSS and multi-tiered systems of support, a program for all of our students. This is a long-term implementation. A lot of work has already been done. January is going to be the date for that, but given the conversations that we have been having about budget prioritization and needs on campus, a lot of what she is doing reflects the needs of students on campus as she sees those and works with her team. She'll be sharing some of those meetings with you as well as where's also, as well as where we're going. So this presentation seems more appropriate now, given that we're having another in a series of work prioritization conversations. So hats off to Mrs. Gugonas. She has taken the bull by the horns with this and is doing just a fantastic job, and look forward to what she has to present this evening. The pointer is there. If you'd like to tell you who's pressed and you're ready to go. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. So MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred System of Supports. Here's kind of a nice visual. So it's, back in the day, it was RTI and it just focused on academics, but now we've blended three altogether, and that's what creates MTSS. So you'll see there's academics, and we also look at behavior and wellness. And the way I look at it is kind of like a stool with three legs. If you don't have all three, you can't, like, the child's not going to be able to learn fully, and you can't support the whole child. Semester one accomplishments, these are just some of our major highlights that we've had as a team. We were able to partner with SB Youth Wellness Coalition, and that coalition pretty much brings together, I have their flyer, but it's a bunch of organizations that come together, and we focus on mental health and wellness throughout the county of Santa Barbara. So there's about six to eight meetings a year. I've attended four so far, and we just kind of brainstorm ideas for all school districts, but also including us here up in the valley of what we can bring to support our students. We've conducted six MTSS team meetings semester one. We've completed the FIA, which is a fidelity integrity assessment, and that pretty much takes you through, like, the MTSS team through a process that highlights what you want to focus on for the school year, or not even just the school year, kind of where do you want to start with this whole process? And the determined follow, the determined focus areas ended up being behavior and wellness. Not to say that academics aren't important and aren't going to be a priority, but we had to start somewhere, and those were like the key highlights that the assessment showed that we needed to focus on first. Analyze discipline data at our monthly meetings and look for any trends. That's another thing we look at. We take our discipline data and break it down from, kind of give a vision of the whole district, and then we look at just for Fufio, just Sandy has, and then we look at trends with both schools and kind of where we want to focus on if there's anything glaring. Building the foundation of tier one supports, behavior, and wellness. The first semester, we spent a lot of time training our staff, including the IOT team. The IOT team attended a PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports Training at Santa Barbara County.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Just real quick, IOT, for the sake of the board, means?
Instructional leadership team. Okay? So we, we went to the PBIS training, so that was kind of the first thing that led us off this school year. And then there was a lot of mental health, wellness, behavior trains for the whole staff. In August, we had the PBIS, the Positive Behavior Intervention Supports Training that the IOT put on. In September, we had suicide prevention training by the Sandy has Tribal Health Clinic. And then in early October, there was the Valleywide Training for all of the school districts, and that focused on youth mental health first aid. And then in late October, we did a review, the IOT, myself, Susie Rodriguez, and Patrick Shadick around that, and we did like, kind of like a blend and a review for both trainings. And then we have one more training in December on Monday, and that will be like kind of our final PBIS for this semester. And then another thing that the data was showing us was that we had more kind of vape incidents this year, so then we created a drug prevention task force, and there's a team of us that has been working on that as well.
Who all was on the IOT?
It's myself, Patrick Shadick, and Susie Rodriguez.
Two of your teachers?
Two of their teachers.
So we have a task force, and that's one or two of the three, I suppose?
So the IOT is, the three of us focus on providing professional development to the faculty. The drug prevention task force is a different entity, so that's myself, Peter Hawes, Mark Swannitz, and then we work with Mary Conway from PHP. There's a student representative on there, so it's, it's a different team. And then we're talking about vape and then drug prevention. The resources on our campus currently, we do have this flyer. This is what came out of the Youth Wellness Coalition that I'm on. It looks like this, so it's available on the school website, and the guidance counselors have that available to them as well. We do have a PHP psych intern on campus Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and then we have SB hospice grieving services on campus Thursdays.
So on every Thursday, we have a hospice grieving council?
Yes.
How busy are they? It's, it's not like there's a student suicide every week.
Right, so, well, the grieving could just not, it's not just for, you know, like a student on campus in terms of like themselves, but it's also like if a grandparent, like a close immediate family relative, but it is a free resource. So they come out strictly, you know, just to support us, and that's one resource that I found through the coalition that I'm on.
So is that person typically spending their whole time with students, interacting with students, or?
So, yeah, typically it's like five students, you know, that, that person sees, and that's strictly just for grieving purposes.
I think the hospice grieving services, that, if I recall, Joanne, that was something that you were kind of pushing for, weren't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was something that your family used and you had referenced.
Yes.
Great.
Any other questions? So what is needed to strengthen our current mental health and wellness supports? So as an MTSS team, we see value bringing back the health class as a tier one support and then adding in a licensed marriage and family therapist as a tier two support. So the health class, that can embed all the social emotional curriculum that focuses on the five core competencies, and I listed them there. Pretty much anything from drug prevention to, you know, sex education to anxiety, stress, all of that could be done in the health class. And then I, we foresee like the licensed marriage and family therapist to the next level. So then we would have like a screener to indicate who needs the extra layer of support, and then those students would be assigned a therapist. And then there's like a whole process, and once they, you know, are pretty much remediated, then they're out of that, that tier two. That would be the goal.
Stephanie, may I ask a question, please? Where is a school psychologist in this? I mean, I know we have one, but the, the person is busy with his special ed students. Would we, would that be a next part of this, or is that something irrespective of this?
So the school psychologist that we currently have, like, the main role's eighty percent specialized and then twenty percent gen ed, so it doesn't leave enough time.
Right.
They could definitely work hand in hand together. I think hiring like a, just a school psychologist is my first, I think they're more expensive, and I don't think we need everything that's like a second school psychologist would bring to the table. I believe just like a licensed marriage and family therapist would kind of be the...
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. So Stephanie, excuse me, so you're saying in lieu of a school psychologist, you're suggesting that that's what we do?
Yeah, because the school psychologists, they do more thorough assessments, like it's a whole another level of expertise, and I don't think that's what we need for our gen ed population.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Behavior and wellness supports. So this is our next steps. We are working on a school-wide behavior expectation matrix, so we're finalizing that currently. Develop a school-wide positive acknowledgement system. So once we have our behavior expectations for all the students on campus, the next thing we'd like to start bringing is more positivity to the campus, and then continue to make connections with outside agencies to support the wellbeing of our students. Another option is discuss if piloting the mental health first aid course with our 10th through 12th graders is feasible. Bishop High School is currently piloting in this, and they're the first ones in California where they take the mental health first aid that we were taught, but they're teaching it to their students, their, their 10th through 12th students. So I'm kind of asking Rachel, the lady who leads this program, if possibly we could be, you know, another school to try it out. But there would be logistics of where to embed that within the 10th and 12th graders on school day. Begin developing our tier two supports for behavior and wellness, and then drug prevention campaign in January. East and multimedia classes have agreed to bring on this drug prevention campaign, and then we're also researching feasible assemblies that we can bring in. All right, so what about the academic tiers of supports? What's the plan? So we're not forgetting about those again. Those are kind of coming, you know, later on, but we're developing first the behavior and mental well, mental health wellness. But we do foresee ourselves going in this direction for the academics, so the first step would be develop an early identification system. So that's creating a screening for all students early in each year so you can see where they are, where their benchmarks are. And then the second thing would be create, create increasing levels of targeted supports for those who are struggling. So then what do you do with the students who are struggling? And that could be, these are possible examples, like creating a reading intervention course, a math intervention course, and then a school-wide embedded study hall period. Some high schools have those as well. And then monitor students' progress frequently so educators can use the data to help decide if more interventions are needed. So then you're continuously assessing the students and kind of seeing where they fall in place. And then typically at the high school level, if they are remediated at semester, then you would ship them to a different class if they no longer needed that intervention.
Any questions? I know it's a lot. So California Sums Initiative, I'm not sure I'm thinking there.
Yeah, so pretty much California.
What is it? What is, what is it? Do you want to tell?
The Sums part I don't know, but all I know is that California is working on, in general, like bringing it to all the school districts, and then they just explain, it's just a different visual for the one that I had earlier, that it's not just academic, it's social emotional, and then the wellness behavior, you know, then it, it supports the whole child. And on the bottom, it just says all means all, and that all parties come together. It's not just the school district, it's also, you know, family and community engagement, administrator leadership, so you look at the leadership, and then the education framework, and then the policies. So it's just like, it is a big, it's a big umbrella, and it will take time to develop, but I think we're, we're heading in the right direction.
Okay, well, I did, I looked it up.
Thank you.
On a scale of multi-tiered system of support, that's as close as I could get to what that means.
Okay.
So, multi-tiered system of support, which is basically the same thing as what we're talking about.
So a couple of pieces here, and again, I want to thank Stephanie for, for being here this evening. So we, we knew that when we got started with her position, that there would be some immediate needs that we need to get rolling on and not wait a year for implementation. And so I may have, and I want to thank her and her team for already implementing some things on campus right out of the chute, and then also looking at that deeper planning for, for down the road as well. It was one of the major cornerstones of our strategic plans, and when done right, and it's coming, this will touch everything that we do in some capacity or another. So thank you very much, and thanks for being here on Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thanks, Stephanie.
I have a public comment. Related to this, not related to that, I have a public comment.
Right, we'll take it up during the public comment.
This is to do with this agenda item?
Yes.
Add one for a public comment and one with a specific agenda item?
And you can address it during public comments. You have separate comments.
So you're allowing a public comment on this agenda item?
I'm allowing public comment during public comment, and you can address that issue.
There is a general public comment for items not on the agenda, that each agenda item allows for the public to comment specifically on agenda items.
Right, and it will be, this is, this item is in the superintendent's report, so you will be able to comment on this, that MTSS report during public comment. You can have, you have two cards, Karen, I will give you plenty of time, okay?
Okay, just, just kind of follow the law regarding comment on specific agenda items.
All right. Okay.
Next up, Mr. Swannitz will be talking about our CASP results for mathematics. Mr. Swannitz, thank you for being here also on Friday.
You're welcome. This afternoon, I'm going to be presenting on the 2019 CASP results, and then telling you a little bit about how we're using those results to modify and adjust our curriculum in response to what the data is telling us, and I will reserve some time at the end of my presentation for questions, but feel free to ask your questions if you have something urgent along the way. Let's first begin by addressing what, why does CASP matter? The California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress is the state of California's school accountability tool. It consists of the computer-adapted Smarter Balanced Assessment in both English and Math. It gives students and parents an update on academic progress, and gives the community an indicator of how the school is doing at any given time. In any given year, and it also provides teachers with information to help better inform instruction, and is one of the many measures that the state of California uses to determine how a student is doing on the path to college and career readiness. The scores of the Smarter Balanced Assessment are recorded in four performance bands labeled "did not meet, nearly met, met, or exceeded standards." Juniors who meet or exceed standards... Juniors who meet or exceed standards on the ELA math tests are determined to be ready for college and career according to the CDE's school, California School Dashboard. Additionally, when 11th graders exceed the standards, they are deemed ready for college-level courses of the CSU system, which means that they do not have to then take remedial classes or placement tests when they get to the CSU system. So how many students met the state standards on the CASP? Okay. So our data from last spring, this slide's going to show you just how many of our juniors met or exceeded the standards and are therefore deemed college-ready based on this indicator alone. It's important to note that there are other ways that students can satisfy the college and career indicator on the dashboard. This is just one of those ways. Some of the others include leaving high school with UCA GOG qualification, completing a CTE pathway, passing three or more AP exams while in high school, among others. Last year, by the end of our senior year, eighty-one percent of our graduates in the class of 2019 were college and career-ready using one of those many metrics. So based on this one exam, sixty-six percent of our juniors are on track for college and career in English language arts at the end of their junior year, while just thirty-nine percent of our math students, our juniors in math, are on track.
Mark, can you please remind me how many students roughly were assessed juniors?
Two, I think it was two hundred and ten students, or is that incorrect? So when comparing one year to the other, I think it's important to bear in mind that these are not longitudinal studies of how a single group of students performs over time, but rather they are, actually, it's snapshots of distinct and separate cohorts of juniors taking the same assessment. That being said, nine percent fewer juniors in the class of, in last year's, last year's junior class, met or exceeded the standards compared to the juniors of the year prior to that. In math, the situation was similar, seven point nine percent fewer juniors last spring met or exceeded the standard compared to the year previous. All this clearers aside, however, I think it's informative to look at our performance over time to see the trends that are developing. As this graph shows, while English has been up and down over time, the trend in English is generally flat. We go up one year, we go down the next year, and it's roughly flat if you ever draw that trend line in. However, that's not the situation for math initially. Math is following an up and down fluctuation similar to the one we see in English, which is not generally a cause for alarm, but it is concerning, however, that for the last three years, our math scores have been in a declining trend, and so we definitely have some issues for us there. It's also instructive to know how we compare to the state and the county averages. In English, we maintain comfortably higher margin of students who met or exceeded the standards in ELA, being more than twenty percent, or nearly twenty percent higher than Santa Barbara County and thirty percent higher than the state of California, despite the fact that we had that nine percent decrease and the two other entities increased by one percent each. More concerning are our results in math, and that's our downward trend performance. Because of that, the gap between us and the average in Santa Barbara County has closed significantly. We still remain better than the county, but only by three percent. And most alarmingly, we've fallen below the state average in percentage of students meeting or exceeding the standards for the first time ever on any statewide assessment. Naturally, that's a great concern that I share as the math department, and one which has been a topic of discussion between us since the preliminary results were released in September, and we first had the opportunity to start talking about this. While the results do not overall reflect great news, we do have some areas for celebration. Our scores in English and math are made significantly better than the averages in the state and the county, I'm sorry, in English, and approximately one-third of our 11th grade students are already prepared for college-level work by the end of their junior year. More importantly, though, the data shows that our students are not, these are areas for us to improve on. The data shows that our students do not perform as well in math as they do in English. It shows that, and that's typical in most schools, for ELA scores to be higher than math scores, but we'd like to bring that into parity by getting our math scores improved. Both the county and the state saw slight increases in the number of students meeting or exceeding the standards last year, both English and math, while we posted significant decreases. As I'm sure you can tell, I'm more concerned about the fluctuation, less concerned about fluctuations in English, and definitely much more concerned about the variances that we see in math. For that reason, we've been meeting and discussing the issue with the math department, and we have some ideas about what is going on and how we can get back on track. Let me first begin by talking about how we arrived at where we are with our new math curriculum. One of the things that we've concluded is that our students are not being as well-served by the integrated math sequence as we had hoped they would be. So back in 2013, 14 school years, the state of California published the math framework outlining options for how the state, the new state math standards could be implemented in public schools. Those two top, those two options, there were two approved pathways, traditional math instruction or integrated math instruction. We had, prior to that, been meeting with math and curriculum experts from Santa Barbara County Education Office and discussing what the strengths and weaknesses of both of those models would be. A couple of our math teachers then attended the National Council for Teachers of Mathematics with a specific goal of talking to their colleagues about the pros and cons of integrated versus traditional math sequencing. We became convinced through the sequence of, those series of conversations, that an integrated sequence would weave together the mathematical concepts, revisiting mathematical topics over the course of a three-year span, would provide a better foundation in math and better prepare our students for higher-level math courses. So to that end, we decided in 2013, 14, to go ahead and start pursuing an integrated math sequence as we rolled out the new math standards. We worked with Santa Barbara County Education Office throughout the course of that year to start writing the curriculum, writing the courses, taking the standards, and chunking them into blocks and aligning them in those three integrated courses in such a way that it would make sense to move back and forth throughout the years. And in 2014, 15, we rolled out the first two of those new integrated courses in the form of Math 101 and Math 90, which is a remedial course designed to help prepare students who would not master the age-grade standards. We continued with that rollout in 2015, 16, with our Math 201 and 201 courses added to the calendar, and then in 16, 17, we rolled out Math 301 and 301 Honors, which were the third and final courses in the sequence. If you think back to that earlier chart, that earlier graph, it is not a big leap to make to see that our downward trend in test scores began in 2017, which is the year that we had fully implemented the integrated curriculum. There was a, in that first year, we went from fifty in the very first year of the CASP, up to fifty-five, back down to fifty. In that first year, the thought was, okay, this is just going to be sort of a fluctuation, and we'll go back up and down date based on the different cohorts, and we weren't concerned. Then we had a second year, and then a third year of declining trends. And so it was not a big leap to make to assume that our earlier assertion that integrated curriculum would be the better approach for providing good math instruction is probably not correct. But not everything can be summed up... But not everything can be summed up in an arbitrary score as being cut points on a math test. So there have been some very positive intangibles which have resulted as a course of this process. First, our math teachers have had to collaborate with one another extensively around a lot of the topics of instruction and assessment, and so their collaboration has never been stronger. I'm very proud of the work the department has done in terms of communicating with one another and planning together around instruction. It's resulted in better professional interactions within the department, which is never a bad thing for kids. Second, in part because of their increased collaboration and the need to have professional conversations about instruction, our teachers have mastered new student-centered pedagogical skills. Third, we have made the shift away from the old teacher-centered, process-oriented instruction and effectively established student-centered instruction in math. And then finally, that has resulted in students developing 21st century workplace skills and learning how to do more than just solve math problems, but how to learn how to apply math problem, math skills in the real world. Those are some good takeaways, things that we've learned as a result of this process. But given all of this, we have evaluated our core math program from top to bottom, and we have arrived at some concrete changes, which we're going to begin implementing right away to start to correct the course of math instruction here at the high school. First, we're going to prioritize the administration of the interim block assessments at the freshman, sophomore, and junior levels. Interim block assessments, as the name implies, are small blocks of computer adaptive assessment related to particular standards and designed to be administered to groups of students for two purposes. One is to familiarize students with taking the math test online, and the second is to gather data about student mastery around particular topics and standards to inform future instruction. We will begin administering these IAVs. We've done this in the past, last year because of some technical issues, we did not administer the IAVs, but we're going to go back to administering IAVs and prioritizing that as early as this January, and we will begin using the data collected from them in the spring and ongoing moving forward. Next, we plan to develop a reasonable and thoughtful timeline for the transition away from integrated math instruction and back to traditional math instruction in the form of Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. There's a lot of work that goes into that, there's some communication pieces that have to be made, and there's some other things that need to happen as a result of that, so we want to make sure that we're being very thoughtful and deliberate about our implementation of new courses. And finally, our fourth thing that the math department, I believe, will correct this is that textbooks have been now out long enough to be properly aligned to the new California State standards, and so we would like to adopt new standards-aligned textbooks to go along with the new courses. And as we do that, that process will take place along with the adoption of the new courses, and so you will be involved, obviously, in the approval of those courses and textbooks as we go through our process. We believe, the math department and I, that these significant changes are not, they're not taken lightly for starters, but we believe that they are firmly at the core of the issue that we're seeing, and that these corrective measures will take root and get us back on course in math. With that having been said, you have any questions?
I have a question, John, Mark, and that is other districts have adopted or transitioned to the integrated model, right? How are they doing? Are they getting the same results, are they getting better results?
Locally, I don't know of any schools that did the integrated model, so I haven't done that research, I wouldn't tell you for sure. But one of the ways that math, our math department has assessed things is that the way that we kind of chunked up those materials when we were dividing them up and making the integrated classes, a true, really integrated model is going to really seamlessly weave all of those math topics and concepts together throughout the three-year period. What we have found in the way that we did when we worked with the county education office is we chunked these topics up into pieces, and so the math department believes is that when they just get to the end of a topic, and kids are just maybe starting to get it, and then they move on to a different, unrelated topic, or they're related but unrelated. By the time they get back to that original topic again, whether it be later in the next semester or the next year, that the kids have forgotten it, and they're having to spend more time reteaching.
So basically, they haven't mastered it at level one, level two, or level three?
Correct. Right.
Go ahead. Okay. So, this is all kind of related here. So, administration of IAV, IAV online testing format in January 2020, and I guess we had technical issues last year, which I believe that you stated. So, along with not having textbooks, which is, sounds like would be something down the road here, isn't this a factor in what students are experiencing, the familiarity with the online testing and not having a physical tool?
Well, to be, to be honest, they, it's not that they don't have textbooks, we're using online textbooks and printing those things out and giving them to kids. So they do have texts. But the fact is that the group that took the test last spring had never taken an online, well, not since eighth grade, taken an online math test, so they were less familiar with it. And that's a very different kind of thing than taking an online English test where you're more familiar with just choosing multiple choice answers and writing. Taking an online math course and using the sort of embedded tools that are available in the Smarter Balanced Assessment can be challenging for some. So I think it is a factor, I don't think it's the only factor, it's a less significant factor, but the fact that our juniors last year did not have the opportunity to be exposed to that leading up to the test was a problem.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark, could you tell me, please, so these new classes that will be going, kind of a deep dive into the specific topics, okay, they will be aligned with the state standards that have been adopted?
Correct.
Okay, good. Because I'm concerned, because I've been reading, I'm sure you have too, that University of California and Cal State are thinking about using smarter balanced in lieu of the SAT or ACT, and so that would be very, very important for our kids to be able to score well on those.
That's correct, yeah. So the, the new courses will be, they're going to be written from the ground up, because we're going back and revising everything from the ground up using the new California standards, designing the course was aligning with a physical textbook, which is not properly aligned to the standards, and revising all of that. So, yeah, they will be based on the standards and preparing the kids to do well in Smarter Balanced for the very reasons that you're suggesting.
Okay, thank you. First?
I was reading in the
Bring your math honors.
I was reading in the pack, I think the students will be taking some sample computer math, math tests, because that's extremely important. And I'm, sorry I arrived late and didn't hear everything, but it's very important that we don't move away completely from some of the good aspects of what we've been doing. And I'm thinking in particular of project-based learning with math and trying to make our math courses something that's relevant to what kids can see, why are we doing this? And I think that was something that was really important in this program that we took on. And I hope that we keep the good parts of that and really look at this closely and work with our students on being able to take these tests online, because I don't think that's going to go away.
No, it's not. The kids need to be familiar with the test, taking them online, but we also need to address, you know, the critical deficiencies. But I did mention in my presentation in the initial verbal part of it that the new student-centered approach to learning, the project-based, the discovery learning, the new approaches that the teachers have adopted, the professional collaboration amongst the teachers around those kinds of projects and teaching, are all things that we're going to keep for sure. The, you know, to be honest, one of the reasons, another reason that we went with an integrated approach was that the teachers themselves wanted to challenge themselves to learn that stuff, and they felt if we continue teaching Algebra I with an Algebra I title, then there's, there might be a tendency to fall back into old habits. So having spent the last four years working on these integrated math courses and developing those models they've now learned and are very comfortable with and see the advantages of that kind of instruction, and so that will continue as we roll back into a traditional model, traditional curriculum.
Any other questions? John?
Madam President, would you give me the luxury of being able to talk a little bit about this subject, because this is something that, as everybody knows, is near and dear to my heart, and there's a lot of what Mr. Swann has said, I'd love the opportunity to be able to respond to. May I?
Sure.
I appreciate, or I take note that, I don't believe I heard the term Common Core uttered once during this presentation, but let there be no misunderstanding, that is what we are talking about, is Common Core. And so the question is, has this grand experiment that California has been wrestling with since 2013, has it failed our children? You show me a state superintendent that claims that Common Core scores are better than the scores the students were performing at in the traditional era, and I'll show you a state superintendent that's living in a fantasy world, because you cannot find objective data out there to support the success of Common, of Common Core. I feel that a little bit of history of Common Core needs to be repeated. No Child Left Behind was a product of the Bush 43 administration, AKA Common Core. When President Obama took office, the same program was continued only under a different name, Every Child Shall Succeed Act. For years, the program that California had for educating our public education students in mathematics was the gold standard for which all the other fifty states compared themselves. The standards with which California schools adhered to was developed by Stanford University. In 2006, when the Thomas Fordham Foundation looked at state curriculum content standards across the country, its reviewers gave California's 1997 math standards a grade of A and supplied this evaluation, and I quote, "If any state has math standards right, it's California." The Golden State Standards avoid almost all the pitfalls of other states. They call for the use of calculators at the right time and in the right way, and build student skills in a logical progression that emphasizes computation, problem-solving, and mathematical reasoning all the way through. Elementary students are directed to memorize basic number facts and develop facility with addition and subtraction. High schoolers are given solid coverage of Algebra, Algebra II, and Geometry, and advanced courses in high school would challenge many college students. All in all, the state has a top-notch blueprint for mathematic excellence." Those were the 1997 California standards, which were in effect until about four years ago. Similarly, in 2008, the American Federation of Teachers gave California math standards its absolute top ratings for clarity, specificity, and content. Governor Schwarzenegger was concerned about Common Core being less rigorous. He recommended we absolutely not approve Common Core, quote, "unless they meet or exceed our own standards," end of quote. So what the hell happened? Until Common Core, the major thrust of the, of the effort to improve mathematics in America has been moving an authentic Algebra I course from the high school into the eighth grade. This would be similar to what high-achieving countries across the globe have been doing for a long time. Supporters of the idea have included math education reformers, civil rights leaders, and even President Bill Clinton during his time in office. As a result, from 1990 to 2007, the United States more than doubled the enrollment of eighth graders taking Algebra I. The results of the 1997 California standards push to introduce algebra to eighth graders and earlier grades encouraged other states to duplicate California's success. Williamson Evers with the Hoover Institute, quote, "The increase in taking algebra early in California was quite staggering. While in 1999, only sixteen percent of students took algebra in the eighth grade, four times as many, or sixty-seven percent, took it in 2013. This huge increase did not lower the success rate, in fact, the success rates of those students kept rising even as their enrollment exploded. To give a better sense of the growth, the number of successful early algebra students in California rose from fifty-two thousand in 2002 to one-hundred-and-seventy thousand in 2013." Because California set up its 1997 standards to prepare all students for Algebra I in eighth grade, the biggest beneficiaries of this effort were ethnic minority and low-income students. While the whole cohort's success increased by a factor of three, the rates of success for African-Americans jumped by five-hundred percent and for Latinos by six-hundred percent. Even more impressive is the fact that taking Algebra I early translated into more success for Algebra II, geometry, and all other high school courses. Again, as in the case of Algebra I, minorities were the prime beneficiaries. So the prime effect that we were supposed to have from then changing the system of Common Core was completely defeated. If you look at the performance of the United States on the world stage, there are very few studies that compare how the United States compares math-wise with other countries. Why is that? Because most of the studies are conducted by US-based firms, and frankly, that would be a tacit admission if they were to commission a study which didn't show the United States in favorable light. Thank goodness for the PISA studies, P-I-S-A, which stands for I believe it's a Pew study, forgive me, Program for International Student Assessment. And so in 2015, which was two years after the institution of Common Core, they studied the performance of seventy-two countries. Out of seventy-two countries, the United States, which historically has ranked number one or near number one, out of seventy-two, we ranked in the bottom-fiftieth percentile, number thirty-nine to be exact. Countries such as Singapore, Hong Kong, Taiwan, Switzerland, Denmark, even Vietnam ranked twenty above us. Vietnam. I guess we can take pride in knowing that we beat Kazakhstan, and Malaysia, and Uruguay, So with the deficiencies of Common Core, rather than moving Algebra, Geometry to earlier, earlier years, the proponents have moved it back. And not only did they move it back, but they decided to combine it into, as you say, an integrated approach of Algebra, Geometry, and Trigonometry. And speaking as a father whose child has had both of these cores of study, both in the private sector when it was the traditional approach, and now in the public sector, I can tell you that what happens is when you try to integrate all of these disciplines, you end up with students that are having repetitive training, year after year after year after year. Yes, I said that four times. They're trained the very same thing, or the same thing said in reverse. If you're spending time repetitiously teaching the same material over and over and over again, that means there's significant amounts of material that never gets taught. And that does happen.
John, could you wrap it up?
No, I can't, but I'm, I am talking as quickly as I can.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry if I'm boring everybody.
You're not boring at all. Really, it's possible.
All right, so this is having a trickle-down effect with the California universities, because as we dummy down our secondary students, these children now are unprepared when they go to apply for college. It's bad enough that we, we only have thirty-nine percent of our students graduating, which are meeting the minimum college requirements. So what are the colleges doing? Well, the colleges used to give remedial classes. These remedial classes were given college credit. Now they have, they coined this term co-represent remediation, but don't, don't be confused by the fancy word. What it means is colleges are now giving college credit for remedial classes, which, which totally devalues the diploma as an employer. Mark, when you're interviewing a teacher, what type of value is their resume if you see that they've got a diploma from something like California State where they have all these remedial classes? Last study I'll share with everybody, you can look all these up online, fifty states plus the District of Columbia, so out of those fifty-one, does everybody want to guess where California ranks as far as the percent of, of high school students that graduate college-ready? Out of fifty-one? We are fifty-one. So, Mark, I'm sorry, but I don't have much tolerance for comparing the performance of our school with other California schools. I mean, what I would love is one of two things, to compare our children's performance with the other private schools in the area- the other private schools in the area, or better yet, non-California schools. I'd like to compare our school with schools in Montana, New Hampshire, Minnesota, Wyoming, Alaska, and North Dakota and Vermont. That's what I would like to be doing. You know, we have as our core value, and I quote, "excellence." We relentlessly pursue excellence in all academic and organizational endeavors. I do not see 39% of our graduates as being ready to get into college as fulfilling our core value mandate of excellence. The last thing I'll say, I am told that right now there are 100 students on the waitlist to get into Dunn University while our enrollment is now dropped below 900. We should all take that as a personal insult, a personal offense. That means that there are 100 parents in this community who are ready to dig into their savings account not to send their children to our beloved school. We've got to do better. I wish you would have allowed me to be on that group that decided where we're going with our math department, because you've heard me screaming about this for the past 12 months. And I will ask again, I would like to be actively involved in whatever decisions are being made in this school as it pertains to where our math program is going. Because if we are going to be bringing in new textbooks that are still teaching the integrated approach, we're once again experimenting with our students. We know what worked.
Thank you, John.
We know what worked. Everybody, look at this graph. This is when Common Core was instituted, and this is the performance of California students since then. We know what worked, so why are we not going back to it instead of still experimenting around? Thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you, John.
Just one thing, Dr. Baiki had asked me to actually research. He referenced it after our last meeting, there were 100 students on the waitlist.
At Dunn.
At Dunn. And so I did talk with the Director of Admissions, and he said, yes, we manage a waitlist and decline enrollment of many students every year in order to enroll the optimum student mix at Dunn School between the upper and middle school. This number can be 100 students, although I'm not sure, unsure, unsure of the exact number. There are very few Senate-ass valid students on the waitlist each year. Most of them would be boarding students in 1819, the school year, the number was 10.
So the number was 10?
Yeah, that's correct.
As I said, that's just what I was told. I didn't research.
Right, right. He asked me to clarify that, so he had said.
Thanks for the clarification. Any other questions for Mark? I wish you luck, because I'm really bothered by his results, and I think that a three-year slide is unacceptable.
As am I. In 24 years as an administrator, serving over departments I've never had before, he said that.
Can I ask one question about the new math books that will be aligned to the standards? They will not be integrated, though, correct?
No.
Right, they will be back to the traditional, traditional law.
Algebra one book, the J R U book, did I have to reiterate?
That's right, thank you.
And we'll be going through, Detective Corey and I have already talked a little bit about what that process should look like, where we have some, you know, public carry on those things and have viewing opportunities. The math department obviously has been interested in helping choose the books, but we want to make sure that we're going through a very transparent process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Just one piece to wrap up for facility update, something that we'll bring into the board in January, possibly February, but we have some major facility upgrades in regards to athletic facilities need to occur. One of those is that our football field turf is currently failing, creating some safety conditions that we need to remediate. So I will come into the board after the Christmas break to discuss that replacement and bring you some information. I'd share with the board that there are multiple things that could be facing us over a multi-year period that we need to plan for, which is fine. And Dr. Baiki had asked for a tour of some of those portions of our facility. We'd like to open it up to everybody. And I will have Wes Fall to get in touch with you right after the Christmas vacation to set up time, but he's interested in how to do that, and I also have some more information ready for you at that time as well. Okay? Just wanted to put that out there publicly before we hit January.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to item six, which is public comments, and I'm going to start with Deb Andrews.
Thank you. I applaud your concern for students by implementing MTSS. Things have gotten complicated. Instruction should be the primary intervention. I urge you to focus on traditional time-tested curriculum and instruction and offer all students the opportunity to learn at their own pace so that they're intellectually challenged. Research shows lack of mental challenge results in neurosis and a whole host of problems the longer it is allowed to continue. Give you an example. Like all parents, I was blessed with a perfect, intelligent child. However, in elementary school, he began to have all kinds of problems. He was becoming a child I didn't know. Behavior problems, couldn't do the work, being sassy with teachers. It's like he was being transformed. I had lots of meetings with the school. At the last meeting I had with the school, they said that they decided the reason for all his problems was he was spending too much time on his computer at home at night. Well, I'm glad they told me that. We did not own a computer. So I realized what was going on. I pulled him from the district, which was the wealthiest in the area, did a lot of research, moved him to a district in the next state, Iowa, 17 miles from home. It was very poor, but they had old-fashioned curriculum, and because they had no money, they had to hurry the kids through as they were ready. As a result of that, he started college at 13, half-days, high school the other half. At 14, he began research with NASA on space shuttle tiles to develop something that could take the heat better. Presented his research at the Nebraska Academy of Sciences that same year. And as he was challenged intellectually and was allowed to learn at that poor Iowa school, his behavior problems ceased, and he again became the child that I was so proud of. It took about a month and a half for his anxiety and for him to calm down once he was allowed to learn and be challenged in the classroom. When students just sit and they don't have anything for their brain to work on, the brain is going to figure out something on its own to work on. If you have a low percentage of kids that are ready for college, you have a lot of kids that are not intellectually challenged, and lots of problems will result from that. Behavior, addictions, who knows? So I urge you to turn the clock back to traditional curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, you had requested to speak about, I think, MT, is that what it says?
Math.
Oh, the math, okay, along with general comments. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to allow you three minutes for your general comment and three minutes for our, and I was losing the same information as John.
The day and the time, or, good afternoon, I'm sorry. Thank you for having me and thank you for the opportunity to speak. The day and the time of today's board meeting are very unfortunate and inconvenient for many students, teachers, staff, and parents. It is unfortunate, especially given the items on the agenda that directly impact our students and teachers and staff. The presentation on the decline of math preparedness should be presented, I believe, by the math department, who directly works with the students and not by a spokesperson. And I question why the teachers aren't here today, and I don't know if it's because of the time of the board meeting or the day.
Actually, Michelle, is a member of the math department or department?
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you for being here, and I just wish that they were available so that the board can ask questions of them. Are they getting the support? I've been to a math presentation last year, and I just, I heard what their needs were, and I heard a lot about the outdated technology, how they had iPad part that was six years old. They need calculators. They need, they can't use their phones, pull out their phones, because kids have all different types of phones. So there's a lot of inequity of who can load a calculator onto their phone, who cannot. So they need that one-on-one technology to help them, and I think that helps the class, the teacher as well, because they're not looking at their phones and get distracted by whatever else is on their phone. So I just wish that we could have another meeting, and the math department can come here and honestly speak to the board, especially this is a very critical time. And I feel sad for those three years or four years of kids that now have been disadvantaged going through life now, especially if they are going to pursue finance and economics or science if they plan to go into college. My second comment is about, I just have a request in order to maximize transparency, especially with a meeting like today. Mr. Corey? Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Oh, I have a question for you. Would you please post the video of this meeting and all the school, and all the school board meeting videos on the district's website? So teachers and staff and students that have not come to these meetings that start at 4 o'clock, where many parents are working and can't be here, and the community can view the discussions and the decisions that are made by this Board of Education?
I'll consider it.
You'll consider it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I really appreciate that, you know, for transparency purpose, this is a public meeting, and there's no reason why it shouldn't be posted on the district's website. We respect the board and the difficult decisions that you must make, but in case we, this is on my third point, but in this case, we're disappointed that you allow the superintendent to lead an investigation on himself and his behavior at the expense of us and the taxpayers. The community and the teachers and the staff are scratching their heads on this one. Why is the board not taking control of the investigation? All the costs of this ongoing investigation are passed through the school district's lawyers. The investigation is funded by the taxpayers and the community. We do not get to know what the outcome of this investigation is. And you're being asked, this, in today's meeting, to approve more legal bills. This month, it was 8,300. Last month's checks approved by all of you, the legal bills were 27,000, 2,700, excuse me. Since the school started this year, the legal bills have been 54,000. And that number is the cost of the investigation. We're approaching the salary of a health teacher or staff service person or a school resource officer, and these legal expenditures do not help the kids, especially we need some technology support for science and math. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for public record, I have zero hand in the investigation, nor will I be present when the board reviews the results. And I had no say in developing any of that or any part of it.
Karen Jones. Karen, I'm going to give you plenty of opportunity to speak to the two items that you listed.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Derek Sonnenberg, you have more than three minutes. Thank you.
I'd like to first use my public comment regarding the agenda item on the superintendent's report. I'm glad I'm here today. That was interesting to me. It's a little top-heavy. When I lived in Bakersfield, I did all the juvenile services for the drunk driving program there. And as, what was called a drunk driving school, it's called STEPS, Special Treatment and Education Program. But there weren't a whole lot of drunk drivers, and this was in a city, 350,000 people about in Bakersfield. At that time, there were roughly maybe 15 high schools. I think there are over 20 high schools in Bakersfield now, but this is back in the mid-'80s through the mid-'90s. I did all the juvenile services for young people who had been arrested for drinking and driving before they were 21, they were still in high school. There weren't very many of them, actually. You know, I didn't give a dime. There might be a dozen kids from a city that size enrolled in the drunk driving program. Another part of what I did was do once-a-month class for first-time offenders that the probation department did not want to put into the system yet if they got caught with drugs or alcohol at school or some incident involving substance abuse. They would come to a Saturday program, and one Saturday a month, I did substance abuse education and would do analysis and make recommendations. A school resource officer kind of thing, only without the, being onsite. So when I hear this top-heavy pyramid, acronyms, blah, 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 I'm thinking, wow, 350,000 people, we were able to handle it in a pretty straightforward way, very effectively. And it seems to me like the interest is in the program and the building the empire of treatment rather than actually straightforward solving the problem. I'm really glad that you're staying with this, Dr. Baiki, because sometimes we get so complicated when the answer is simple and would be so much more effective. So I'm glad that I sat through that, and I hope that the website does include the meetings, because people would be interested in this. It's just, life is so busy and is complicated, in some cases by design, because that chaos keeps people from paying attention to shenanigans. So anyway, I'm glad that you're talking about helping kids, but I didn't hear a lot of helping kids. I saw a lot of, all these different people coming together with their alliances and this and that. I didn't really see much, what would come to the kids out of it. So now, my other three-minute thing that I wanted to talk about, and if you want to pass these around. Somebody gave me this to read for them into the record, and I would like this in the record of the board meeting, and it's from a former employee who is not a friend of mine or anyone I know, Laura Seifer. And she resigned, and in her resignation letter, which I passed around, a request that it be put in the record, she wanted to say it had been a pleasure working here, but it wasn't. And she describes, under Mr. Corey's administration, how things have been intimidating, how there has been harassment. And I'm not in a real position to contradict what she's saying or endorse it in any way, but I do disagree that it started five years ago. I keep talking about this 2020 bond, and I see a public employee pension board. I wonder who represents me. In 2008, I saw a takeover with a fake recall by a man named Bruce Porter. He served recall on a citizens' board, and the school board was very engaged in the community since then. There was a big dust-up between Clevinger and the school board, and it became Mr. Porter's ticket in to get power over people. So that's what I want to keep saying, is this, you know, one of the people who was paid the six figures is a lady, once again, I don't hang out with you guys, I just follow the money, and I, you know, try and be an informed citizen, and I care very much about my freedom, and I care very much about how public funds are spent. And so this gal who is in charge, it was Mr. Turnbull who preceded this superintendent, he was a problem also, and he didn't, this board did not, the people who are still on the board, and some of you are new, some aren't, you were brought in by Mr. Porter, you're part of the old Porter board. And Mr. Porter, Mr. Turnbull, and this gal who lived in Los Alamos formed this thing called Citizens to Improve Santinaz High School, yes on L. So it was really all about the money, and I believe this Nicole gal got the six figures so she wanted to reveal that you guys are using public funds to pursue political ambitions, power, and to protect your own pensions. I just see a bunch of public employee pensioners. And I'm a native Californian, and we were number one in education. And now we're number one in public employee pensions, we're number one in welfare, we're number one in homelessness. And this Common Core thing, you guys can wring your hands and try and find a solution. You're the ones who pushed it. I was going to board meetings back when it was controversial, and, oh, Common Core, yes, collective core, stronger together, right? We're with her. I get it. You guys, you tried your experiment, and it has failed, and instead of trying to integrate anything onto something good, you should all apologize and step down. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to item, there are other public comments. Item B, which is the organizational for year, December 13th, 2019 to November 30th, 2020. And the first item, number one, is election of president. It's an action item. First of all, let me say that it has been a pleasure to serve as president of this board. I appreciate everybody's support, everybody's questions and comments. And with that, let's move along. So, election of president for one year, do I have a motion from the floor for our election of president?
I would like to move that I mean Preston be elected for board president.
So you're nominating?
I'm nominating, yes.
Okay. So we have Eileen. Do I have a second?
I would second.
Okay, Chris? Excuse me, Tori. All right, we have a motion and a second to nominate Eileen as president of our board. Are there any other candidates? All right. So with that, motion for Eileen Preston to be incoming president, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Okay, motion carries 5-0. Congratulations, Eileen. And with that, I am going to...
And with that, I am going to move on and over. Are we switching seats? We are switching seats. All right, give us a minute. Thank you. Thank you, members of the Board. At this time, we'll move on to the next order for the organizational meeting, which is the election of the clerk. Clerk actually has many responsibilities, signing documents, the minutes, for example, as well as presiding over the Board meeting when the Board President is absent. So at this time, do we have a nomination for a clerk for the 2020 year?
I would like to nominate Tori Babcock for election of the clerk position.
Okay, and do we have a second?
I would second.
Okay, we have Tori and Chris. We have any discussion? Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Lauren, Mrs. Babcock. Okay, item three is the election of representative and alternate to, like, members to the County Committee on School District Organization. Mr. Corey, could you just contribute a little bit on that item for the benefit of the Board?
Sure, this function is actually very simple. The only task, as Dr. Baiki knows, that, correct, there's one, that you're sent a ballot to elect members to the County Committee on School District Reorganization. That is the sole function. Over and done.
Okay, thank you. So do we have a nomination? We need a nomination. We don't have to take these individually, do we, Mr. Corey? Representative and an alternate?
We can take both names, sure.
We have a motion, a nomination? Okay. Dr. Baiki, do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay. So Chris and Tori, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And the next one is?
Do we want to officially include an alternate?
A nomination for an alternate.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
You already mentioned.
Nomination for an alternate. Can the alternate by default be the second person? Or is it, they have to have? Is that what you're saying?
Separate nomination for an alternate.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, second nomination for an alternate, okay. Have a nomination.
Let's get Chris in on here.
Yeah.
Non-mateurs.
Okay, okay.
It's pretty time-intensive.
Non-mateurs for Chris.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have John and Jan nominating Chris for this. And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Madam President, I just want to clarify that I serve, I'm appointed from the third district, supervisory district, to serve on that committee. So, I mean, I could, as a Board member, serve represent the district, but I serve on that committee already.
Okay. Thank you, Jan.
Yep.
Okay, item four, election of representatives for negotiations. In the past, Mr. Corey, we have had two representatives.
Yeah, a little bit of history here. It has been the district's tradition that we have two Board members that have served on the negotiations as representative. In most districts, you will not see a Board member on the negotiations. It's a good idea, they really serve as a separate function from what that process should be. That being said, we're a very small shop, and so the district office is essentially comprised of myself and Mrs. Lewis, and then the trusted Mrs. Westfall as well. But negotiations really should have another member. I would recommend that we just have one Board member on there to make a team of three. Typically, in negotiations with teachers or the faculty association, there's three. Just something for you to ponder, don't have a dog in the fight one way or the other. But I think, again, creating as much separation as we can between the Board and negotiation process, two separate functions, I think that could be a wise thing to do, at the pleasure of the Board.
Okay, so we can, do we have a nomination for a representative or two representatives?
Scott, I thought you had told me earlier that for this particular year, your expectations, there will be no negotiations, so the nominated person will have no responsibility.
Yeah, so here's, so that's not a hundred percent defined typically, past practice in this district has been that we have, since I've been here, we've negotiated in the year of eligibility and maybe whatever we did, if there was a pay increase, retroactive. In other districts, it's a practice to, if you're going to be negotiating, which is our case in '21, '22, because we're supposed to be dark next year, some districts do start in the spring. I'll be speaking with the different bargaining events next year. I mean, I would imagine we would keep that same practice. So you're right, the likelihood is that there won't be much happening this next calendar year. I think it might even be a good idea to stay dark for another year. But I'll be talking to the different groups, but you were corrected, that there's a chance that there may be no duties for 2020.
Are we required to elect someone to this position, or can we just let it ride?
So I would recommend, again, electing at least one, I think it's a good idea. The business manager provides information to the team. I think having a couple there, certainly part of the process, but I think having someone else other than the superintendent, again, in a small district, I think it's important to have another member.
Who was, who was John this year?
John, John and Corey.
Yeah. So, and you can decide to say, you know, whoever is, the clerk is, everyone wants to structure that. There's nothing binding you from anything you want to do.
Why, yeah, I make the suggestion that we just made a motion that we keep the current negotiators?
For this coming year.
For this coming year.
Okay. All right.
Second.
Okay, so we have Chris and John.
No.
There we have Chris and Jan.
Yeah.
Wrong J name. Chris and Jan, the collection, second.
I'm sorry, was that what you meant? I thought we were going to keep saying two.
Same two, so we made a motion, second, Chris and Jan.
I'm sorry.
Which will be, yes, that says the J name.
I'm going to stay out of here.
That's okay, it's okay. So it will be John and Tori. Chris and Jan made the motion, am I correct? That's for the Board? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries five-zero. Okay, we got through that. All right, so item five, selection of meeting times, dates, time, and place. I myself have put a lot of thought into this, because we've had meetings at different times in the last few years. Jan, we've had them at three, we've had them at five. This year, we've had them at four, thinking that that was maybe a better time for staff. Clearly, there's never really going to be a perfect time, I don't think, for when we have our meetings. So perhaps we can start with the day, the day of the meeting, the date. The third Tuesday of the month, as we have been doing, does that work for everyone?
Yes, for me it does.
Does it work for staff?
Sure, just, yeah, so it's the third Tuesday, and there's just a couple of exceptions throughout the year, but, yeah, that has been our typical.
Okay. And then the time, let's talk a little bit about the time. John, go ahead, please.
The four o'clock time was originally presented to us a year ago.
Right.
As the opportunity that would make it easier for teachers to be able to attend.
And students, too, actually.
Right. And I think, for the most part, it hasn't had the desired effect. But I can tell you, the comment tonight that we got from one of the patrons, I hear this all the time, people, parents are upset that we don't have a later start because they see it. The perception is that it's purposely held in the afternoon to discourage premonition. If I could have said, yes, that may be, but we have a robust attendance every month with faculty and students, but we don't. And so I would propose that for the next year, we do a similar experiment and see whether we do get increased attendance by the patrons, and I would like to see it six P.M. start. Speaking selfishly, it would help me tremendously with my clinic schedule, but that's a selfish comment. I think that there's a very good chance we would have increased participation.
Everybody, go ahead.
As a member that has seen this time moved many times, the five, and we didn't see any increase, but I haven't seen any increase at the four o'clock either. So, but I'm retired, and I'm only going to be here through the next year. I think it might be interesting to try a six o'clock approach, because, as I say, I know the five o'clock did not seem to increase. We were at a supposed? I can't, do we historically?
I can't, because typically, people get off work at five o'clock, and so that may be the reason why there wasn't much attendance at five o'clock.
Now, so I have no problem with that. I think, you know, it's worth, it's worth trying to see if it will improve.
Somebody's working in Santa Barbara, getting off at five gives them an opportunity to still be here.
Any other comments, committee of Board members?
Mary, I have? You know, I understand what John is saying, and there's a logic to that. I also, oftentimes, we will have students coming in for award ceremonies and for different kinds of things, and I think originally, that's why we went to an earlier, if I'm not mistaken, an earlier time, because you can have kids come in by nighttime, they're done with their school day, they're home, starting homework and those kinds of things. So I'm also concerned about students being able to attend and be recognized by the Board as well.
I think we could, I'd like to see a compromise and start at five o'clock. I think that it's not too late for students. I think that if the topics are attractive and of interest, people will show up, they'll... And so I think, you know, I'd like to propose a five o'clock time, start time. I think six o'clock is a push for when we talk about having our meetings go for an hour and a half or two, and then we go into closed session, and we are not fresh as daisies when we're making decisions in closed session. That's just my thought.
Okay, I have one more suggestion to throw. And third, because as I said earlier, as I stated earlier, I don't think there is really ever a good time, and I think that this is calling the school districts and councils and County Board of Supervisors, you know, they're nine o'clock on Tuesday morning, so that doesn't work for a lot of people either. Is there any reason why we couldn't make it at five-thirty? Just a thought.
Well, again, the students, I don't know, a lot of them come out of sports at five o'clock, and then they come here and be recognized. You know, I think, you know, I agree with the idea that perhaps, I mean, it's Mr. Porter's idea, that we have put on our school website, the, you know, in case kids are having trouble sleeping at night, they can put on our Board meetings and that, make care of the situation. But, you know, all kidding aside, I think it's probably a good idea to have that, and then people perhaps who can't be here at least can view it easily by getting on and seeing that, to see if that helps address some of them. I confirm myself, because the students send for a five o'clock rather than five-thirty, but.
I think everybody's got good reasons here. So, is there any other comments? So we need to move to have meetings on the third Tuesday, we got that part, in the San Andres Valley Union High School District Board room.
That's two for three.
That's two for three at the time of the wishes of the Board. Do we have a motion?
I'll give you a motion, five-thirty.
Five-thirty? Okay, so John, at five-thirty? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Chris? John and Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
No more discussion, aye?
All aye, yep.
Okay, we have, as far as I can tell, we have three ayes here.
All call them.
Dr. Baiki?
Aye.
Mrs. Clevinger?
No.
Mrs. Burton, aye. Mrs. Dabba, aye.
No.
Mrs. Preston?
Aye.
Okay, she carries three-two. Okay, thank you, everyone. All right. Item C is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of it.
Jan? And do I have a second?
Absolutely.
Jan and Tori, do we have any discussion on the consent agenda?
Yes, is that, this includes the minutes from the last?
Yes, yes, it does.
Meeting.
I actually have heard you have the minutes or something, do you want to?
Um, yes, I'm here. And, Scott, I was thinking about this, because I know that on the, our agenda tonight, we're somewhere, you had suggested that we talk about how minutes are recorded.
How minutes are written, I thought, at this meeting or the January meeting?
Oh, yeah, or the January, so maybe there is not time for it now, but I thought if there was time, we could almost use as an example of our project, is the, what we're doing on amending any minutes tonight could be used as an example of maybe what we want to do. Because, I don't know, Dr. Baiki, did you go through the minutes? Did you see everything that was?
Well, thank you for asking, unless I missed it. I only got in the Board packet last month's November, but at November meeting, I handed President Clevinger a whole list of modifications, so I assumed that this month I would be getting the modified minutes from all those previous months, which I, unless I missed it, I didn't.
See, what, Jan, go ahead.
Well, no, I just read John's amendments in, okay? And I believe that there was noted that the amendments were read into the minutes.
Into the records, correct?
There are still months going back, of which at least my binder doesn't have minutes for every single month, because we were waiting for them to have the modifications adopted last month, because they were.
I thought we had all the minutes, but we just didn't have the amendments attached.
Right. My understanding is that we had, we went through the minutes, Jan read your amendments, we all agreed to your amendments, and we approved them.
That was our understanding as well, and those have been posted accordingly.
Yeah.
Scott, you in fact asked me to email you, which I did.
Sure.
All of the changes, the typos, the whatever.
And those were incorporated and have been posted.
They were, how were they incorporated?
She went back and amended the minutes accordingly to those comments.
That's what I'm asking, is then could I have a set of the newly incorporated minutes?
Sure. So one of two ways, either Terry can get those to you, or they're all on the website.
Okay.
So you can check and go, because she's already posted all of them. So, whatever your pleasure is on that one, but it's been done, because the Board, we understood the Board to say, hey, here's the amendments, approve as amended, changes incorporated and posted.
Okay.
Does that work?
That works.
Okay?
Okay. So I understand what you're saying now, John, go ahead.
Then back to what I wanted to amend is under the last Board minutes. Number two, under budget prioritization, and there was a whole bunch, there was public comment, and then the Board continued discussion, and the third, one, two, how many words? One, two, three, four, five, six, of course, I always go backwards. My, from the bottom, about the, Mrs. Burton has commented that the Board needs to prioritize and compromise how we spend our resources, and that's fine. Concerned that our campus will harden, like, doesn't sound right. What I meant to say there was, we need to compromise, my opinion, on having hardened security, locks on the doors, signs, the best technology, but we also need to have mental health services. mental health services. So that, what I meant by the hardening is we need to become a, we need to step up the security of our school physically.
So, can I just read the way it's written now?
Yes, may I make a comment?
Sure, go ahead.
And I feel like this is something that we, as an English teacher sitting here, texting has made us, and I don't, we need, this is what we need to figure out about these minutes, has made us make very incomplete sentences. And we need to figure out, when I was reading these comments, I was thinking, these might be better if they were complete sentences, because it becomes very difficult when it's, we text so much that we just sort of think that everyone, because there were some confusing things. And that's something we need to discuss on how minutes are taken.
So, if it's, if it's okay with the board, let me read what is written here. We'll make those changes so we can approve this. And then, if it is the wishes of the board and we can fit it on the January calendar schedule to include some discussion about the minutes, I think that might be appropriate. And then I think it will help us collectively move forward with this. Because like, they're all good ideas, but we need to sort of.
Right, because it must be very hard for Ms. Westfall to try to make things concise. And as I read through this, this is more information, better information, I feel, than we've been getting, but I can see that we need to tighten some things up or to make, clarify some things, because it sometimes reads very choppy, my opinion.
And you haven't taken minutes before, it can be challenging to ensure it is accurate and such as you're stating. So let's just, let me just read this, and then we can move on, and hopefully we're, we are in discussion on this, so then we can get this approved. So it states as, Mrs. Burton's commented that the board needs to prioritize and compromise how we spend our resources. Concerned that our campus will harden, encourage board to improve school climate, safety, security, locks on our door. And so is that correct? Is that the one that you want to?
Yes, I'm just concerned.
I detected a running sentence, though.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I think I detected a running sentence.
Yes, okay. Well, anyway, I, I think we can, I think this is, I think we've made a lot of progress, so I'm pleased with what I've seen so far. And yes, that was a running sentence, I didn't take a breath, I don't think, so.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, don't like D. I'm, it sounds like it's saying, if it was a sentence, I am concerned that our campus will harden. I don't know what people think when they read that. I just am saying we need to, I've heard this term used when you're trying to increase your security, you need to harden your.
Yeah.
So I'm, I, I think it's a word that probably should, you know, maybe not be there.
Okay.
That we need to increase our physical security, physical campus security, but we also need to increase our mental health resources for our students.
Terry, take a minute if you, if you need that to, did you get what Chris, oh.
And we need to increase our physical security, and also we need to increase our mental health resources.
Yes, that's.
That's, okay, great, thank you. So it's, we have a motion by Jan and a second by Tori to approve the consent agenda with the amendments.
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Dr. Beke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mrs. Burton?
Aye.
Mrs. Batton?
Aye.
Mrs. Preston?
Aye.
I would like to give a huge nod to Mrs. Westfall. We only have one, seven minutes on the agenda, which is fantastic.
Yes.
She's been doing a lot of, a lot of cleanup, still has some work to do, but we're in a good spot right now. So, thank you, Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Terry. I know you've been working hard on this. Okay. So item D under the action agenda, item D one is approval of resolution 2019-2020-9, authorizing delegation of governing board powers, duties and authorized signatures page. Mr. Corey?
Certainly, every time we have an organizational meeting in December, maybe we just need to update our signatures for the county, I'll be sending that around if you just sign next to your name. That is the function of this particular agenda item, and legally required to do it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. I guess it was Jan and Chris. Okay. Any discussion on this? Roll call.
Dr. Beke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mrs. Burton?
Aye.
Mrs. Batton?
Aye.
Mrs. Preston?
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Okay, item two, approval of Deani Building Corporation contract extension, Mr. Corey.
Certainly, thank you for the opportunity, and congratulations to President Preston. Thank you for taking over. Okay, we want to talk about a contract extension for Deani Building Corporation. When Deani Building Corporation first came on with us, they set up a contract that was commensurate with what they were told by our architects for completion construction, and that was to be December of 2019, it's even on our signs up front of the school. So we experienced, in broad categories, the major moving parts, two delays in the process. Those are listed in your board report. The first one had to do with, we knew this back in August, September of 2018, there had been some issues with our architect in terms of, one, both a fiscal accounting that causes to re-scope some of our work, that took time to do that re-scope, and then also timeline management. So, for example, if you want to be into DSA March one and you're six to eight months back, how do you map that to get to that point? That was not managed well. I think it is legitimate to say that of the time that we went beyond, six weeks of that is legitimately over by nineteen six. The other was beyond all of our control, when we did submit to DSA, we were actually at DSA two months longer than anticipated, and that was just a DSA thing. It wasn't like we had multiple markings of plans coming back to us for correction, we simply got hung up in DSA for another two months. We're supposed to receive stamped or approved plans on March one, first week of March, we did not receive them until May ten. And so that was, again, nothing, that was not the fault of nineteen six at all, I think we had some small markets on them, but that was, that was it. So between those two, primarily, we wound up in a place where we were pushing three months on extension on that schedule. So Deani came to me and said, you know, we were on contract through December of 2019, and for the extra work, we want to propose an extension. You'll note that the contract is actually for eight months, so there's two things of work there. One is a three-month extension to complete the current scope of work, which we are projected to be finished by March, and the other is for an additional five months for additional scopes of work that were not in the contract. These things most likely will not require intensive construction management services, the two projects that are out there. One is the baseball bleacher project, which is slated to start, we're going out to bid, hopefully in February for that, slated to start in the first week of June. Keep in mind, there's two parts to that project. One is the actual bleacher construction itself and associated hardscaping and all of that. And then also, we are attending to some significant drainage issues that we're experiencing out there, and so there's some more civil work and then other dirt work that needs to happen out there. And so it's possible that we will not need construction management for that, Deani might actually bid that, and we would not require their services if that was the case, but we'll see how that whole process goes. And then there's also another scope of work that we had to, excuse me, extend from Measure K, it's actually the last scope of Measure K, which is a small scope of HVAC work for the admin building agado, and we talked about the old gym as well. So they made an eight-month contract, I do not believe at all that we will need that. Deani has been a fantastic partner, I've already talked with Pete extensively about value engineering that, so, and they have already reduced their price actually a little bit here, but I believe we're going to be able to take that price south of $200,000. I'm also in negotiations with nineteen six as well for their portion of that, which is approximately $30,000, to get compensated for that as well. So I would approve, approve, ask that you would approve the extension for their construction management at-risk contract, and allow me to negotiate both with Deani on some of the scope of work and de-scope that in terms of what needs construction management, and also to negotiate with nineteen six.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corey. Do I have a motion to approve, approval of Deani Building Corporation contract extension?
So am I.
Okay, Jan, and do I have a second?
My second.
Okay, and do we have discussion on this item?
So, take me back down memory lane, oh, a chunk of this extension is due to the fact that nineteen six is at fault for, shall I say, sloppy work on a part of one of their architects or whatever, that created the issue with the delay at DSA.
And just, so, no, they were not responsible for the delay at DSA, they were responsible for submitting to DSA.
Submitting to DSA in time, et cetera.
And they are in touch, she's no longer with.
Right, and he's no longer with us, and I remember that we had Mr. Croker here from nineteen six and at one point to speak about that, and we kind of grilled him. I think that there should be a little bit more, turn the heat up a little bit more, because it's costing us additional dollars based on that mistake, it's a huge mistake. So I'm not real happy about having to throw some more money at these projects because of their issue.
And we'd be getting about $30,000 out of it.
Yeah, which I don't think is enough.
That's not enough, because she's weak to live.
I, it's, I don't, I don't think so.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I mean, I know $30,000, but can, you know, go back and negotiate a little bit more and see what we can get.
So I believe that we can, but if you wanted to have, and I let, let them know this might be the case, have Mr. Croker back here in January, I've already ordered that possibility.
Certainly, I would.
Good.
So I asked Mr. Corey earlier this week, maybe you ladies already knew this, but where that $200,000 is coming from?
Oh, yes.
And I forget the, the name of the fund, but I call it the GOOPs fund, we have $500,000 set aside for cost overages, and so it's not like the $200,000 is then going to prevent, is going to, is going to create some type of operational pain for the district.
Correct, on this point, yeah. If you'll remember what you wrote, and thanks for bringing that up, when we first started our Measure K campaign back in 2016, we felt that, as a board, the board felt that we were asking the public to step up, what is, what is our ante in terms of facilities, and that was where the $500,000 came from, that's been a set aside just since that time.
And so Scott, refresh my memory, we don't still have $500,000 in that fund, we've already spent some, I forget what you said, at least, I don't know.
We're at about $325,000 left, I think, so.
There you go.
So the 175 we spent on what?
Painting all the buildings was one thing, the shade structure part, another thing, and I have, I think there was one other thing, but I can't remember what it is. But I know the painting was the main thing, and then the shade structure was another large thing, but there was several different things.
So the reason I'm asking, this will, for all intents and purposes, deplete the fund.
Has a potential.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, weren't we praying that there was ultimately going to be enough funds left over so we could go ahead and do the parking lot in the manner that was originally hoped for?
No, this is not related to parking lots.
No, I know it's not related to it, but wasn't that the, the hope, is that when this project is all done, there will still be some monies left over in that fund?
No, because it was only $500,000, the cost of the parking lots were several million bucks to make that happen between the east and the west, and that's in our Prop 51 funds that are coming, we have seven million coming over the next two years, going to come out of that fund, that even the 500K, if we had a full amount, wouldn't come close to covering the redo of both parking lots. You have good clarification.
Chris?
Could you refresh my memory on how much money for Measure K we had in a contingency?
I'm not sure what you mean, Measure K was 14.7, but I don't know what you mean by contingency.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying, when we went out to bid and everything was bid out, were there any contingency monies put aside? Other than this 500 that you're?
Right, into every project, we always build in a contingency, that's correct.
Are those?
Into every scope of work that we can, that we.
That we've completed.
There is a contingency of varying amounts depending on the type of work for every, so for the unforeseen's or the GOOPs, if you will, I mean, we always build it into every project.
Okay, so for all the ongoing projects, projects that are going now, are there any contingency monies left, or?
Each project is different, and we just had a finance meeting with all the key players this week, where several of the projects that are now wrapping up and the contingencies have been released. Some, most of them did not use a full amount of the contingency, Pacificom released something like $10,000, and.
That was the communications.
Yeah, Pacificom released $17,000, I believe it was, so each project had it built in, and then whatever we don't use, they release back into the volume. So right now, the current projects have that contingency in place, we have not utilized them yet, otherwise we would see change orders and have them now somewhere.
Yeah, we've been very fortunate.
So there's built-in contingencies.
Correct, into every scope of work, yeah, and no, no change orders to date, which is pretty amazing. So that's, that's great to be able to say that.
That's.
After three summers of work.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion by Jan and Tori to approve the contract extension. Do we have a roll call?
Dr. Beke?
Aye.
Mrs. Flunder?
Aye.
Mrs. Burton?
Aye.
Mrs. Batton?
Aye.
Mrs. Preston?
Aye.
And just to confirm, did I hear from the board that they would like to see Mr. Croker back here in January? Was that the will of the, will of the board?
Do you think that'll help?
I, I believe I can work effectively with him without that, but ultimately, he answers to, to all of you.
Is it possible for you to report back to us, how did you, how did our process go before we decided?
Absolutely, maybe I can even dangle that out there.
You'll have to sit through one of the meetings.
How does that public filane sound? Yeah. Okay, thank you all very much for the.
So I think what we're saying is that Mr. Corey will be with Mr. Croker.
Yeah, no, you bet.
Maybe perhaps President could be in that meeting, it tends to help take it from its very age.
Okay. You ready to step into that role, or?
Yeah.
We can give you that opportunity, okay.
I was just suggesting, I was on board then, but I was here at that meeting.
I will request a meeting then with.
Okay.
That was very subtle. It was great.
Okay, good, great, this needs to be. Item three, actual approval of 2019-2020 first annual report for standard certification and first annual multi-year assumptions. Ms. Lewis?
At the end, I was just here telling you guys the very same stuff next last month, but there have been a couple of key changes, so I won't berate the fact that we already discussed, and I will go over the key changes and spend some more time on those, those things. So what's important to know about the first item, which is different from when I was up here in front of you last month, is last month, we were working on assumptions and best guess is where everything would lie in terms of revenue expenditures. As of now, we have concrete numbers for our beginning budgets, those are no longer estimates, and we have concrete numbers for all expenditures and revenues through October 31st. So when we receive revenues, and particularly, all October revenue is now received and posted by the county as of October 31st. The actual month, so to speak, the fiscal catch for the month doesn't close until halfway through November, so that's why still some of those things. So that's why still some of those things were still up in the air. Our property tax projections have come in, so now we have something a little bit more concrete to base those revenues on. We still have settled negotiations for two of the three years in our NYPD. We're still dealing with a slight decline in enrollment, which for a basic aid district with very few categorical dollars, those dollars based on ADA, it is actually a blessing in disguise for our district in most cases. And we are still maintaining a $3 million static minimum fund reserve policy for adaption. Given that information, we'll take a look at our revenue. Again, just lining it up with the Saks documents in the event that you want to go look in the board pack and try and find what we're talking about. The original budget is the third column, and where we landed at first interim is the fourth column. You will notice the change in the fifth column. So this is one of those key differences I will bring to your attention from last month. We're projecting an increase in unrestricted revenue, so 1.1 million. So the main change from the last time I spoke to you is that this is a larger increase in revenue than we expected. When property tax projections came in, they came in 3% higher than the 2.5% that we were projecting this year. So if you remember back on our conversation.
Excuse, could you clarify what you just said about the property taxes?
Yes, yes. So we are actively engaging in responsive budgeting, where we are trying to get a less of a swing from our original adopted budget to unauded actuels. So in doing so, we're changing the way the district has historically budgeted and moving away from an ultra-conservative budget to slowly a little bit less conservative in terms of projections for both revenues and expenditures, and removing budget bummer, that type of thing. So this year was the first year that we increased our revenue projections from a historical 1.5 that the district has always budgeted for property taxes to 2.5 in an effort to phase in increases that more accurately match where we land on audit actuels without getting overzealous and then coming up short at the end of the year. So this year, we budgeted 2.5% as an increase for our property taxes. What we saw with the first projection is almost a 5% increase if you take it from last year. So the increase was 3% more.
Than what...
Than what we originally budgeted at first, at the original budget. Sounds redundant, but that's what we call it. So what we originally guessed, it's 3% higher than we originally guessed. That is a huge positive for our district. And this, this increase in revenue also includes what we've discussed before, the legislative changes as a result of our legal battle with Olive Grove Charter School Wilton and the release of both the expenditure that we had set aside. So it releases the expenditure, and it also releases the hold that we had on other monies that were coming in. So the net result is $1.1 million increase from original budget and revenue. So looking at expenditures in the same fashion, these are the codes. If you want to match them up, what the document is in the budget report, Saks reports online. The third column again is where we originally expected to be. First interim is where we are now, the fourth column, and the change you will notice in the fifth column. So we are projecting a very slight increase in unrestricted expenditures of only $173,392. This increase is a result of two major things. One being an increased cost related to technology infrastructure and some very expensive things called switches that apparently are instrumental in our infrastructure. And when they don't work, we all complain, no one can do anything. But I don't know exactly what they are, but they're expensive. So we have an increase in that. We also have an odd dichotomy where we have previous employees leaving, new employees coming and taking over their place, employees working extra hours, vacation payouts, which is increasing the salaries and benefits associated with those classified employee positions as a result of these overlaps. So those are unexpected from original budget. So taking a look at the unrestricted general fund balance, this is the beginning fund balance, again compared from original budget to first interim with the change in the final column. So you'll see that the beginning fund balance, once we had actual numbers, was 1.9 million higher than we expected. The deficit shown at first interim has actually decreased by $69,000 over the 18, 19 unaudited actuels deficit, which came in at $590,000. This is awesome news. We are actually addressing our deficit. It's moving in the direction that we want it to go. And when we spoke last month, this was a key area of concern because it actually looked last month, without the increase in property taxes, that our deficit was slightly increasing. The increase of property taxes has mitigated that, and now we're seeing a deficit, or a decrease in our deficit of about $70,000. The unrestricted ending fund balance increased overall by 2.9 million. This is again related to both the increase in the property taxes, the 1.2 million that we released, that we had to save and set aside for the Olive Grove payments and other things. So what you'll notice here, I'm sorry, I misspoke. The ancillary bond projects that we were talking about earlier is actually 350,000, not 325. So you look at your ending fund balance, which is 7.2 at first interim. You subtract ancillary bond projects, you subtract set aside for bleacher land improvements, and you subtract the $3 million reserve that we have to keep. And the lottery funds are a restricted resource, so these are the lottery funds we expect to have left over this year. That will probably go away, but we still have to subtract those because they're restricted. And it looks like we have an excess ending fund balance of about 3.6 million. So part of the first interim that I don't believe was included when we spoke last month was multi-year projections. So as a required part of every budget iteration, we have to show not only that we can meet our fiscal obligations in the current year, but that we can do so for the current and the next two fiscal years. So the assumptions used in our multi-year projection have a property tax increase projected now at 3% instead of the 2.5 as we're seeing increases. If that ends up coming in higher next year, we're going to continue to slowly increase until we find a balance between our projections and our unaudited actuels. Other revenue remains stable, our state and federal COLAs are included, but because we have declining ADA in those areas that are normally based on ADA, the COLA and the decline in ADA sort of cancel each other out, and you see more of a stable state and federal income, state and federal revenue. Salaries and benefits increased in 2021 to accommodate the final year of the CBA, and then they decreased in the last out year, in 21, 22. This is important, this is an important key concept here. When you look at the multi-year projections, it looks like expenditures go like this in the second year out, and then this in the third year. That's accurate to the extent that that's when our collective bargaining agreement stops, that's when these excess monies come off of our expenditure side. However, we know we're going to go back to the bargaining table, and we know that we're going to be somewhere. So that dramatic decline is not a reasonable assumption to make that it will stay that way. It will change as a result of negotiations. How it will change, whether it's benefits or salaries, on schedule or off, is up to negotiations. But just know that while that looks awesome, leave room for negotiations, don't go wild.
And Alicia, just real quick, so the precipitous drop is due to we had one time off schedule that we're providing staff over a multi-year period, and so that goes away at that point. So just important to note.
So we also, in our multi-year projections, are not including any potential savings from the retirement incentive, as we don't have any final numbers as to who's participating. So that, any savings are not included. We include books, supplies, services, and operating costs at the state-required COLA. The sped increase is kept at about 3%, which has been holding pretty solid. So we're hoping that's a safe guesstimate. Our transfers out, this is also important, our transfers out decrease in 2021 because our deferred maintenance contribution falls back down from $150,000 this year to $75,000. That was a conscious decision to ensure that some needs that came up during construction were met, and we are going back down toward normal annual $75,000 contribution. We have no additional budget additions or expenditure reductions included in the plan, so that anything that we discussed last month about adding back or reducing or removing, everything is status quo as of what we know right now. No additions, no deductions.
Alicia, just real quick, so I want to, want to give a nod again to Alicia the budgeting differences and changes that we made. I mean, we've heard loud and clear from the board after what we went through last spring, agreeably, it was a very rough time, that our budgeting needs to be a little bit tighter. And so in response to that, we did make changes in property tax increase projections and those kinds of things in other, in other funding areas. We were within less than 1% on projections than where we actually landed. And so when we look at an increase going again from 2.5 now to 3%, it provides more, a little bit more risky for Mrs. Lewis, not necessarily her preference. It's her job to be really conservative. But in terms of hopefully stabilizing things more for staff, more for instructional materials, things like technology, how do we support the instructional program? We believe that this is a step in the right direction. Should probably only lose three or four nights of sleep a year with that. But I think we're heading in the right direction to help stabilize this more. And that was in response to the direction from the board.
So looking at our multi-year deficit and excess reserve, the deficit looks like it jumps in 2021 as a result of the last year of collective bargaining agreement with the larger percentages of off-schedule dollars on the expenditure side. But then that noticeable decrease in the deficit is in 21, 22. Just be very careful with that decrease because that takes out all of the employee benefits associated with every bit of salary that is coming off. And we know that a portion of that, some portion, will be back. So just be careful with that. In light of the reduction in the deficit, you still notice that the excess reserve decreases each year without any changes, without any reductions in staff, without any reductions in expenditures, without any increases anywhere. The only caveat would be that so far, property taxes have been holding steady and rising and doing really well. As long as that continues, that helps make this not so nerve-wracking in terms of the deficit. But do keep in mind that we have property taxes that will probably be a little bit higher and that the deficit will also be a little bit higher after negotiations are all settled up. When we look at our out-year discussions, we still do have a structural deficit. It is wavering up and down, but we are addressing it. We are moving in the right direction for all intents and purposes. Last year was the first year we actually booked a structural deficit, so that was unnerving. Most of the time, it's, we're projecting a deficit, projecting a deficit, and we don't spend everything we think we're going to spend, and we get more revenue than we accept, and we're okay by the end of the year. Last year was the first year that that wasn't the case. And it's a little bit even more concerning, given the fact that we transferred over all of our rainy day savings from our Fund 17 into Fundo 1. So Fundo 1 showed the deficit on the books despite the fact that we transferred in $1 million. And now our only savings is what is in Fundo 1. There is no rainy day fund. What's in there is what's in there. So it is a little concerning, given we transferred in the right dollars. Again, negotiations will affect years 21, 22, and beyond. Excess reserves will be the primary funding source for any collective bargaining agreement that's settled upon. So realize that all those excess reserves will be used to fund whatever agreements we come to. So any spending that comes out of those dollars prior to a settled collective bargaining agreement is taking dollars off the table. So just caution you with your decisions, keep that in the back of your mind. If and when you receive pop 51 dollars, we are now going to be, we will then be subject to Leroy Green Schools Act, which requires us to put in 3% of our general fund expenditures into a deferred maintenance account every year, and we won't have a choice. I should also have put on here, which I forgot, there is the saving grace of the retirement incentive and how that will help mitigate things as well, but I forgot to put that on this slide, but keep that one in mind as well. Just a reminder when talking about...
Alicia.
Yes, sorry, go ahead.
I'm just looking at that, that 3%. I'm so hoping we get those prop 51 dollars. Do we know, have any idea when that might be?
We will be funded for $7 million, next year and the following.
But we, but we will have to take 3%.
Of general fund expenditures.
Of general, general funds out of that, because that's a big chunk.
It's a big chunk.
It's a big chunk.
Yes.
But it...
It's a very odd law, but it is law.
Well, I can see the reason, because they want you to be transferred to deferred maintenance, which maybe is a good time to just mention, do we have that schedule? Are we working on that schedule?
Which schedule is that?
For deferred maintenance, to keep what we've got, because this, all these monies were going to be put in? That we have that schedule that's going to tell us, we're going to keep this stuff in tip-top shape?
Correct. So preventative maintenance or PM plan to ensure maximal, max, full life of our facilities and equipment.
And then coupled with the out-year discussion, I just wanted to bring back the budget addition option, that I thought we were considering last month. Just a reminder of what those options and additions were and their total cost to the district.
Was this in the board back then, I was looking for it?
Um, Terry, did we post it in the packet?
It should be in the board.
Okay, so yes, it's in the packet. But I also post everything if you go to the department's board. I have a whole host of goodies that probably would be mine-hemming for hours for you to look at. So the presentation, also part of what you're approving right now is the forms that specifically state that we have excess reserve over and above the 4% required by the state, that's manual requirement, as well as the Saks documents, and I speak of them, they're a couple hundred pages. So you can peruse to your heart's content, there's some fun making in there. Are there any other questions or anything I can help clarify?
Will you leave the slide up some?
Yeah, we're in a system. Yes, thank you.
Alicia, are you, how comfortable are you with that increase in special education?
I was really comfortable with that. There were some specific key students that we thought were going to kind of break that mold that we've addressed. But this last week, I'm on the board from Wilton Union School District, and this last week, we had some meetings that, there's some other key components at play, but I think will still be within our 3%, but we are the biggest member of the JPA at about 33%. So changes to the JPA do affect us. We had a carryover this year that's going to have us fall fairly well below that 3%. So they, last year with unaudited actuels, the consortium had something like $500,000 or $600,000 excess revenue. So they have carried that over into this year and divided it up between all the districts so that the district's expenditures are less this year. So that will help keep us within that 3%, and I believe that will help us the next year out too. But there are some key changes in the consortium right now that are slightly concerning.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, Alicia.
Appreciate it.
I want under discussion, public hearing, at this time we'll open a public hearing on excess reserves.
Oh, we need to get it approved now.
We need to get it approved, thank you. Mrs. Plevinger, I'll take them. Motion to approve? I approve.
So moved.
Jan? Your second?
Second.
And Jan, Chris, and you second? Any more call? Okay.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Mrs. Plevinger.
Aye.
Mrs. Bertness.
Aye.
Mrs. Babka.
Aye.
Mrs. Preston.
Aye.
So at this time, we will open the public hearing on excess reserves. Comments on that? And at this time, we'll close the public hearing. And item two, the budget prior organization, Mr. Corey?
Certainly, great segue, thank you to Mrs. Lewis for her presentation. Actually, that's very, I'm sorry. Very timely in regards to our conversation. So we have left this on the agenda and will continue to keep this item on the agenda, actually into February. The good news is that we have a lot of time to consider and have thoughtful discussion about what the possibility might be. about what the possibility might be of either restoring services or adding other services. That just requires a budget prioritization process. So I'll just tee this up and let the board have their discussion. My only request of the board would be that we are ready to go by February. Why is that key? So you've heard a budget presentation about how we are doing right now, and we are in a better spot. We also have before us a retirement incentive that may or may not be successful. We will not know that outcome until January. And so with that in mind, depending on the success of that or not, that will drive whatever the board's prioritization list is and what can or can't be funded. As you also heard from Elise, I just would caution that even though it looks like we're heading to a better place, to still be cautious of what's coming in the out-years and those kinds of things, so we don't knee-jerk something. And I have no concerns about that. I think we're in a good place in terms of our multiple conversations on this. So the list that's before you up there, you saw this last month, in terms of what I've heard from the board, what I've heard from students, what we've heard from the community, this is, this is not my list. It is a compilation of what we have heard from multiple people. This is not necessarily a complete list. It's a starting point for a conversation for the board. But again, this reflects input from multiple sources. You also heard some other things in regards to MTSS and from Stephanie, so some other things for you to consider as well. But again, just another opportunity to reflect, refine, and then hopefully direct me in February for where the board would like to go. Okay?
Sure. Stephanie Gagonis referenced in her remarks, her own personal opinion, what school psychologists might be overkill, so to speak. She recommended mental health therapists, either one or MF...
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. How, do we know how much that would cost for us?
I don't, wouldn't have a cost on that. The only cost, and again, Elise, when you see the psychologist at the bottom there, took, and it was an average, correct, in terms of cost per psychologist, salary schedule? Yeah. So that just reflects an average. At that time, again, that was one of the things we had heard, that we need, you know, psychologists, psychologists, psychologists. And so we just reflected it up there. We can certainly do the same, same research for...
I would like to have that information, Elise, because I, you know, I get that with the school psychologists having to do so many assessments rather than the actual counseling, and I think we really need to have the actual counseling. That seems to be what we have heard from our constituents.
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
Is there any additional information on the school resource officer? It was a grant, I believe. And so is that timeline still, I mean, if we don't make a decision until February, is that timeline still fine?
So that's a great question. So I was very clear with Lieutenant Schway, who's been incredibly gracious in regards to advocating for more funds. I let him know that a decision most likely would not, a decision most likely would not be until February. And that implementation, because if the board chooses to go that route, we want to have an opportunity to interview, effectively implement, and all those kinds of things. I said, it could be, based on the pleasure of the board, as late as August for the fall semester. And he said, we're just happy to be partnering with you, and that would be acceptable. So we have some leeway.
Scott, you've mentioned interview, and the $75,000 would be, the officer would be under the school's jurisdiction?
She would not be a school employee. It would still be a member of the sheriff's department, and we would be billed for the cost of that deputy.
So when you said interview, would we have a choice of officers?
So we would be a part, yes, so we would be a part of that. They would need to hire another deputy to make this happen, or even from inter-department applicants as well to make that happen. Either way, they're going to have to hire somebody else. And so those that were interested from the sheriff's department or outside, we would be able to be a part of that process. It is not our process, because it's their employee, but they're willing to have us at the table for interviews.
Because I know we've all discussed how differences between people, and some people click with the kids and others don't.
Right. Finding the right matches.
It'd be nice to have some sort of input if we went that route.
We have that opportunity.
Maybe you want to answer this. With the MTSS, does that then have built-in mental health, psychological services so that bringing onboard psychologists would be redundant?
No. We could not replicate that level of expertise. I mean, there are other things that we can do, and currently, and you heard Stephanie talk a little bit about the variety of resources that are available to us right now, but again, it involves hospice, who serves a small number. We have interns through PHP. None of those possess that clear credential and expertise that someone like a, a marriage and family therapist would bring to the table. So it's a different skill set, a higher level of skill set.
May I ask a question? On this handout that we received from Youth Mental Health and Wellness Resources for Santa Barbara County, they have a family service agency, and this provides counseling services for therapists on campus, provide crisis intervention, mental health screenings, individual group counseling, mental health referrals, and staff support.
Now, that's exactly my point.
Right, right. So my question was, though, is I, it's my understanding, and I don't remember where I heard this, but that Lompoc, maybe we all heard it together, Lompoc was able to get a grant from FSA to, I think it was a million dollars for all Lompoc schools. So they have counselors and therapists on their campuses. And I was just curious to see if we could see what the grant proposal, what the grant would look like and what the timeframe would be, and if it would be possible for us to access those monies as well.
Sure. I think that grant writing always needs to be a part of our model and pursuing outside funds whenever possible.
Oh, that in particular, I thought would be interesting, since other schools seem to be doing that quite effectively.
Could I...
Sure.
I was looking, looking at this at home, again, in all these agencies, and have visited many of these, most of them in Santa Barbara, Lompoc. And what I really, really feel, these are wonderful organizations, but if you are not close, if you're not in Santa Barbara, if you're not in Lompoc, these agencies are, we need to deal with people that are here in our area, here to help us, whether it's people helping people, services that are close to us, because there is a, this CADA is just the most, they are wonderful, they do great things, but they're not here. And we need to always keep that in mind, that these providers, these are providers. We need something that we can count on that's close and right here and not so far away.
Sure, geographical distance certainly is an issue.
We're small.
It's great to have a list for referral purposes and all that, but because of geographical separation, it's more challenging for families to utilize the services.
CADA is expanding to the North County. Just read it.
Oh, San Francisco.
CADA is expanding to the North County. Yeah, and Family Service Agency is, is in the Valley.
Great.
Well, I would, the interns are wonderful, but it's not the same as having a, you know, somebody who is certificated or has her state license. And I think from what we've heard, that we really need somebody who is, can up the game as far as councilor's dues.
Does anybody want to add anything to this list? Or do we have the MFT we talked about? But that would be in lieu of the school psychologists. Is there anything else, or any more discussion on any of these positions?
Are you looking for any priorities right now, or?
I would love some marching orders, would love some marching orders in February. So I think taking the opportunity now and particularly in January to hone this down so we're ready to go, and in February, we can certainly have some more conversation. And the only reason I say February, if the board wants to go another month longer, there certainly is under your purview. But February, in terms of us initiating a process to restore or bring on new, is going to take some time, and we want to hit while the hunting season is good. I think we're going to, if the retirement incentive is successful, even marginally, we're going to do a lot of hiring, and a lot of HR stuff that's going to need to happen during that time. So not to rush the board, but the sooner we have a decision, Terry's world and my world will be ramping up dramatically and also on the budget end with Elise. So, but February, our timelines are still very solid in February.
We have not, it's sort of in the middle here, and in my opinion, should be really way up there is we need a health teacher.
Health teacher, correct.
And that health teacher hopefully will be one that has some anatomy, physiology background, that will not just be teaching drug education and first aid, but would be able to teach about the human body.
Sure. If the board elects to go that direction, I would strongly recommend a revisit of the job description for those kinds of things.
Because it just really needs to be looked at as a system intertwined system, not, I mean, you teach drug education, and you're saying, Mrs. Upkebrin, you need to know what the, you need to know the human body. You need to know more about it, and I think our kids...
Certainly. Good point. Thank you. You bet.
I would also ask one thing else, too, is I'm still very concerned, we all are, with the issue of vaping. And I've seen that Santa Barbara County has been able to bring in people to have an all-school assembly about the dangers of vaping, and since we don't have a health class in place now, we won't until next year at the earliest. I would like to have some kind of, some kind of program, if possible, we can investigate that, see if we could bring that in. I've also read that other schools, I think I sent articles to people about having, what about smoke detectors of some sort in the bathrooms that can indicate if there's somebody in there vaping. I mean, who knows if it would stop them? It would certainly, could give a lot of kids a, you know, a reason for not doing it because, oh my gosh, the alarms are going to go off. Just little things like that, possibly with, I know this is getting down to granular level, but I still think it's important, considering the idea of having people trained on campus with Narcan, to be able to use that, or at least check with local fire department, Station 32, and see how long it would be before they could respond to somebody who is overdosing and might need the Narcan.
Did it have to be right here on campus?
I don't know. That's, I think that's what we need to investigate, that Mr. Corey had indicated that, but...
Yeah, there's actually specific code referencing the administration of Narcan on school campuses. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So February it is. All right. Item F is more comments and correspondence.
I'd like to bring up something that's rather interesting and happening, and it'll probably take a while. I sit, as I mentioned earlier, I sit on the county committee for district reorganization. And one of our tasks is to, when it's requested, to look at changing district boundaries, to look at what they call laptation of districts, one district being basically assumed by another district. And so there's been a lot of chatter in the wind, if you will, as to what's going on with Vista Del Mar. And it's really, I'm glad I'm sitting on the committee because it does directly, I think, or could impact what happens with the district. It'll impact Santianas High School. So we're in the beginning stages of looking at the quote-unquote "process," and it, nothing will happen until Vista determines where they're going to go, whether they're going to request a waiver to, from the state to Lapsade. And then there's a whole timeline as far as what then are the next steps in that. But I will tell you that being on the committee will be, there'll be frequent meetings and with updates, okay? And one of the big things that this committee will do, if in fact Vista goes for a waiver to Lapsade, and they have to do, file a waiver because they have more than six students. Laptation is... Laptation, yeah. Is what? It's, they basically turn over everything to another, another district accepts it, so there has to be a agreement. Do we know what districts? Well, here's, here's what I was going to say. Interestingly, Vista borders Galida, Santianas High School District, Beulton, Lompoc, okay? And so one of the tasks, if we go down that road and are presented with that on this committee, is that we would determine which district Vista would be annexed to. And for Santianas High, that would be big because they're a basic aid district and they're a huge district. I mean, small number of kids, property-wise, large, okay? Currently, Beulton is administering and managing the district. So that's not to say that it will automatically be annexed to Beulton or anything like that. But that's, that's the situation right now. I just thought if you hear something or whatever, you know, it's, it's kind of happening. And they, Vista was having a meeting, I believe, this week to determine if, what, how they were going to move forward. Unfortunately, they have, it's a three-member board, one of their members resigned, it's currently a two-member board, and they're trying to find a third person because, you know, it may not be a, you know, majority, they need majority on this decision. So that's, that's the current status. I'll try to, you know, our next meeting is in February, we probably won't know anything until, prior to February. But I've been talking to Scott about, you know, where it's, where it's at and possibilities.
Jan, where are the Vista kids, when they're now, where they...
Oh, so currently, there's, currently, there are students going to Beulton, in the middle school, kids are going to Beulton. And the remaining students are being taught. There's three teachers, and I think there's 22 students at Vista, at the school, sorry. For high school, currently, they come to Santianas. And so they would, you know, if they annexed to Beulton, they would go to, continue to come to the high school. And that's one of the, one of the things that the board, this committee would consider is what's best for kids, okay? If they were annexed to Lompoc, they would go to Lompoc. And if they were annexed to Galida, they would go to Santa Barbara High School District. Yeah, TP probably, yeah, okay. You can sure see the, I parked there to meet my son to go to the Lama a month ago. Locked around campus, and it's not being taken care of. It's beautiful. Yeah. There's a lot of, I don't want to get into the details of, you know, like what happens to the facility and all that. We're learning about that. But I, but I did want to bring it up because you may hear some things, and I'll keep Scott posted.
Jan, you do realize, Jan, that as you've been talking, Beulton School has implanted a mole at our table. There is, there is nothing...
Thanks for bringing that up.
You just divulged our innermost strategy to the other side.
There's a mole there, too.
Yeah.
Actually, having Jan on that committee is a huge plus for us. Think property taxes, basic aid, if that goes away, that would be impactful. We don't yet know to what extent, but we need to stay on top of this process for sure. So that's, that's, it's great to have Jan there. And our mole, Beulton, would be really helpful.
Any other more comments? Is, and John, Chris, Tori? Okay, I just have one comment to make. First of all, thank you, Jan, for your years of service as the board president. And second, I shared with Scott recently, going back to Tori's comments about vaping. Dr. Dan Brennan, who is a pediatrician with the Stansum Clinic, some of you may know him. And in his series about vaping, I don't know whether anybody else saw this, if you get the...
the, you know, any information from Sanson, one of the things that was notable in it was not just his patients that are vaping and having health issues, and, you know, probably a list of issues. He also has a population of students that are not vaping, and so what they're experiencing, he states, is isolation. So then the students that are not vaping are also grappling and struggling with what's going on with their, with their friends. So I just wanted to add that, pass it on to Scott, and perhaps he can pass it on to all of you to read more about vaping. All right? So no, at this time, there's no more comments from the board. The next meeting, the board will be convening a special meeting on December 18th, it will be at 6:00 p.m. in a high school boardroom. At this time, we will adjourn to closed session. Our closed session, item is superintendent evaluation, number code 45957. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I agree that we adjourn.
Tori, and?
We're just actually
Suspending.
We're not, we're not adjourned.
We're just going to close session.
We're returning to closed session.
We don't need a
We don't need a